I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's 7:04 PM. And tonight, we have our Home Board Meeting. We're proceeding through by setting up course for excellence in technology, K-12 Continuum of Technology Expectations and Presentations. Before we go to that, I would like to start with a pledge. This is me now.
Sure. Okay. It is my honor to introduce Carolina Vigas. The enthusiasm we see in Carolina Vigas is unparalleled in the classroom, on the soccer field, and every morning when she enters our building. Her classroom presence and participation prompts lively discussions. Carolina's intellectual curiosity takes those discussions outside the classroom as she presents teachers current events and scholarly articles she finds pertaining to course content. Carolina's talent and work ethic continue to impress her teachers and serve as model behavior for her peers. Carolina has the ability to think critically and analyze abstract text and situations. She is always willing to share her knowledge with her peers and support them during group activity and learning. She never shies away from listening to others and learning about their ideas. Carolina has a commitment to bettering herself and those around her. She has a strong desire to make a difference in her environment. Carolina truly epitomizes all the components of our We Rock mantra. Carolina, did you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible and ready to test us this fall.
Thank you very much, Carolina. At this time, we'd like to turn the meeting over now to, again, setting up course for excellence in technology.
Actually, we have one presentation that we're going to do first. That's okay. And Mr. Volkes, can you join me? This evening, I have the pleasure of presenting Mr. Volkes with a special award. The New York State School Boards Association offers a recognition program designed to provide school board members with professional development opportunities and acknowledge those who strive to continually expand their governance knowledge and skills. NISBA, which stands for New York State School Boards Association's recognition program, is comprised of four achievement levels, which are reached by accumulating points from participating in various association trainings, activities including workshops, academies, webinars, advocacy events, custom board retreats, and the annual convention and expo. The NISBA staff, the Board of Directors, and I, along with our Board of Education, would like to congratulate Mr. Volkes for having earned a Level 2 Board Excellence Award, which includes recognition in our board newspaper, as well as a certificate of recognition. We sincerely appreciate the additional time that you have devoted in fulfilling your responsibilities to our Board of Education and our school community. We thank you for putting in the additional time and effort to foster your professional growth and development. And of course, we leave that to you. I want to say that Mr. Volkes attends almost every single webinar. They walk, run a workshop, some are law workshop that he encourages to learn on. Trust me, I'm present. Congratulations again.
Without this school board, without that, I tell you, there would be a real struggle to work on the Board of Ed. They are just tremendous. They're guided. They're leadership. Everything's about them. And that's why I try to do as many as I can, because it helps me understand the intricacies that need to be understood when you're on the board, you know? I'm fortunate I have the time to dedicate to that now. So I want to thank you.
It absolutely benefits our Board of Education and our community. So thank you.
Mrs. Heck will now introduce our next presentation. Good evening. So we have had a one-to-one advisory initiative for several years now, and we know the power of technology and the hands of students and faculty. And we are very proud of the opportunities our students have had in the area of technology. So we also wanted to ensure that technology enhances instruction as well as opportunities for learning for our students. So Mr. Rouse, you need to interrupt, you will. Today, this evening, the benchmarks that have been created by the technology committee to really identify where students and instruction should be related to use of devices, instructional technology in the classroom, and in order to make sure and ensure that students learn and continue to develop new skills and instruction is not repetitive, but instead advances the use of technology that students can advance in their education further. So I want to turn it over to Mr. Rouse, who can share the work that's been done and what it has benefited.
Thank you, Mrs. Heck. Good evening, everybody. Before we get into talking about the K-12 Continuum of Technology Expectations, or otherwise named as What Students Should Know in Technology When? Do you want to give a shout out and a special thank you? Clicker isn't working. To the technology committee members who volunteered their time to work with us to create this continuum. A lot of hard work, a lot of after-school hours, and I want to give a special shout out to all the technology committee members. So the charge of the committee was to develop a continuum of expectations and curriculum benchmarks for the use of instructional technology by students and teachers and partners. This stems from the fact that we have something called the digital use divide. You may have heard of the digital divide. The digital divide is the fact that there are students in our wonderful nation who may not have access to devices or good Wi-Fi. Here, nice wrapaway. Thanks for the one-to-one initiative. We are well prepared in that area. However, having a device isn't enough, okay? Giving devices to kids, telling teachers to use those devices without guiding them or a roadmap is a problem. So our goal with this continuum is to get our students away from the passive use of technology, which would be considered more like consumption, consuming technology. That's my son over there, Luke, watching. He's gonna hate that I said a name. But watching Netflix, playing video games. That's passive use of technology. That's consumption. Our goal with the one-to-one initiative and these new, the new continuum is to get our kids actively using technology to create, okay? Anyone who consumes creating content with those digital tools, that's where the power lies. And in life, in your workplace, you need to know which digital tools to use to create what you need to create. So this is an example of students working together, collaborating, using the tools to enhance and amplify instruction. Technology shouldn't be an event. It should be woven into the fabric of the classroom. So I was gonna say, when I was a kid, when I was a kid, we didn't even have computers in the classroom. But when I first started teaching, the only time we would do technology was when we went to the lab and we would have computer time. We did computer time like once a week, and then we wouldn't do technology until the next week. Technology needs to be woven into the fabric of the classroom. It has to be more like an organic part of the lessons. And students must be given opportunity to show what they know by choosing the tools that best fit assignments and needs. So a couple of tools. So do I need Google Slides? Could I do this project in Jamor? Could I do it in Google Sites? Could I use this new great tool called Kami? So there's an element of choice that's important as well. You can see when students are given choice and an opportunity to collaborate with technology, you can just see a lot of smiles on their faces, that they're engaged in the learning, that it's like an excellent event for them. So we created these, the Continuum of Technology Expectations, as a tool not only for teachers, but for administrators as well. What do our kids know now? What do they need to know? And how can we amplify that? How can we enhance that learning? I'm not gonna go into all that. And I put a copy of the expectations in front of the chairs. I'm not gonna go into each one, but we broke them into grade bands. So instead of by grade, we're saying that the first band is K-2. If you get into grade 2, students should know that's why I'm saying. We'll talk more about that. And it goes, and it continues like that. And you can see the grade bands up there. We have K-2, 35, 68, 910, 1112. Then we have three levels of instruction. I is introduced, R is reinforced, and M is mastered. So, oops. So we would introduce students being able to insert pictures and/or clip art into a doc or a PowerPoint or a slide in the band of K-2. As we go forward in 35, we reinforce that skill. And then by the time they get into high school, it should be mastered. We continue to use it in more creative and exciting ways. We broke it down into seven continuum strands. And you can see them listed here. We're not gonna have the time to go over all of them, but I am gonna highlight a few of them. Basic Computer Concepts and Operations. These are the basics, right? Using a mouse, practicing with the cursor and clicking, those kinds of things. For these are first graders. They're using a tool called KidPicks to practice using the mouse and the cursor and the left click and the right click and working to create an illustration based on a fairy tale they read in class. We also have a strand called Technology Productivity Tools. And again, this is an example of the use of Google Slides in a creative way and in a productive way. Emma created her own background. You see, put the font in, her own font. She added color. This is another example of using the tool creatively to enhance a project. Research is really important, and the students really need to have a grasp on the different tools that are available. And we have different strands in research. They have been narrowed down to search, using a variety of techniques. They have to find credible sources. That's really important in today's day and age. It's finding a credible source. How do we know if the source is real? Is it biased? And if it is, how so? There's a big website that we introduced. It's called AllSides.com. It takes one article and it shows you the article from like a left-leaning paper, from a middle-of-the-road and from a right-wing paper. It's really interesting to see the different paint on the same user. And here are some examples of our students in the library. This actually makes me sad to see how it used to be pre-COVID. Look at all those kids in the library, all gathered together. Mrs. Valentine, our amazing librarian, is showing the different research skills and the tools to use them. And, you know, hopefully that, hopefully we'll have situations like that again real soon. Although the continuum is not tool-specific, because one of the important things of having a grasp of technology is for students to be able to choose the tool for the job, right? But we are a Google district, so we felt it was important that there are certain Google G Suite skills that our students need to know as they go through the grade levels. I'd like to point your attention to the first one. Students will be able to use Google Classroom across all devices. You'll see that it's not introduced until grade 3. This is pre-COVID. We've had to actually adjust, right? Our students in kindergarten have been introduced to Google Classroom because of remote learning, because they need to have a universal platform. We've had to modify that. And COVID has changed, you know, the need to be remote has changed some of our expectations. And in good ways, and we'll talk about that a little too. This kid, Godfrey, is having a great time working on his Google Slides Build a Snowman. He was in second or third grade when this picture was taken. And another example of using a digital tool to practice. We went over like the use of the shortcuts, like the copy shortcut, the paste shortcut, different things in a fun way, teaching them different technology skills. Obviously, digital composition and word processing is really important as well. And students have to be able to organize files in folders and, you know, setting up a page and different things like that. Collaboration and communication skills are extremely important as well. Social media is not all bad, right? There are positive ways to use social media, and our kids need to understand that. They need to understand like how to be safe online. They need to understand that certain apps are gonna use their personal information if they're not careful. Something like TikTok, which my kids are really into. Well, you know, all the teenagers are into it. But, you know, that is, it's taking data from the users, and they need to have an understanding of that. These kids just did a digital breakout, I believe in Miss Cordero's math class. And a digital breakout is like an escape room, you know, the escape room craze. So instead of escaping the room, they have to unlock the locks in the game, digital game, and with a mathematics base. And then they have to like break out of the room, and they get into it. They collaborate. It seems they're having a lot of fun. So we put together an information timeline pre-COVID. We did a three-year implementation plan, and we will roll it out this fall. The idea was to have it, the continuum would drive professional development. And we would create, as the year progressed, as the timeline progressed, we would create student assessments that could be given at the end of the year, the spring, and to see if they hit the benchmarks and mastered them. However, this all changed due to COVID, okay? The three-year implementation plan got pushed forward, okay? We really couldn't, we had to prioritize, right? And the priority was giving instruction, providing instruction remotely to our kids who were home. So it kind of slowed us down. But I'm here to say that we're reconvening the committee after COVID, and we're going to get back on track. One thing we don't want to do is overwhelm the teachers. We don't want them to feel like this is like another thing on their plate. And their plate is really full right now. So we want to make sure that we step back until COVID's over. Wait till we're back, and we're reconvening the committee, and we're going to tweak our timeline. There has been a silver lining in all of school closures due to COVID. One of the good things is that all of our students in grades K through 12 are now using Google G Suite tools. Before COVID, they started in third grade. So our kindergartners are now using Google Classroom, Google Meet. Google Meet, no one even knew what Google Meet was a year ago, okay? Google Meet, now our kids are able to open up the video conferencing application and connect with their teacher. We also expanded the district one-to-one initiative to include students in grade 4. So that was another silver lining in the whole school closure due to COVID. And finally, more students and teachers are now using technology in organic ways, like using it, weaving it into the fabric of the classroom. Not as a standalone, but now it's like a necessity. If you don't use technology in the way we're doing it in school now, the kids, there would be a problem, right? So more, just due to necessity, we amplified instruction and learned more technology. And kids are having a good time with it. It's another escape room breakout. And basically, just to finish off, there are some competencies we have to think about in the post-COVID world. One of them, as a parent, I know self-regulation. Our kids, working alone at home, had to learn how to pace themselves. My son, when we were full remote in March, he was sleeping like, you know, he was up all night till 2:00 AM, getting up, you know, really late. He kind of worked, but that didn't work for him. The expectations weren't as high. So, you know, students, we have to learn how to remotely collaborate, how to be critical thinking and problem-solving, time management. And I wanted to add perseverance, because with technology, there are always glitches. There are always things that are gonna go wrong. Every night that we start this live stream, I always kind of cross my fingers and say a little prayer that it's gonna work. Because as you know, a ton of that doesn't work in it. You need to have a backup plan. You need to have a workaround. And it happens every day. So I want to thank you for being such a great audience. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you, Peter Tom. Now we'll turn that into the checkback.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse. I'd just like to say that when Mr. Rouse was hired, this is not something that every district has. So we're really very pleased that we're going to be in the forefront in terms of these benchmarks, because they're so very important. They really help to frame and emphasize the importance of technology. And of course, you know, the whole point of it is to really get into, you know, weaving that into the fabric of instruction that we do. Mr. Rouse was on a state committee that was working on state-level benchmarks.
That's correct, yes.
And so we were able to bring that expertise here. And of course, like many things, COVID has, you know, derailed some of our plans. But in a sense, it hasn't, because we have really met so many of those benchmarks now. And when the committee goes back to revise them, we're going to be in a very different place. And I think we'll be a little bit ahead of where we would be if we were implementing it in a non-COVID time. So our students have really gained, and our teachers as well, a lot of new skills that will help to, you know, advance their use of technology in really meaningful ways. So there is a silver lining. We always try to be positive. And I would just like to thank Mr. Rouse and the committee of teachers and administrators that supported and worked so hard to get this done. It's definitely an achievement. We'll be very proud of it. So thank you, Mr. Rouse.
Okay. Moving to agenda item number three, public comments on agenda items. Are there anybody who can get any thoughts on what we're proceeding? Do we have anybody here on Board of Ed? Well, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Agenda item number four, approval of minutes. We have a motion to, or any questions on the minutes? We have a motion to approve the minutes for October 21st, Board of Education. So moved by Ms. Pagan. Second by Mr. McCallum. All in favor? I agree. Against? Stay. So the thousand monthly reports and correspondence. Received monthly financial reports, 7/20/20, Board of Education. And correspondence. Of correspondence, and we had several correspondence. We received a letter from Councilman Anthony Diaz Pizito on Board of Education and Board of Education Appreciation Week, October 19th through 23rd. I want to thank him for that letter, of the work that he do here. We also received something from one of our units asking about meeting with the board. And that also was done in the executive session, so we'll prepare that. We have letters from a parent who was Dr. McArthur. And I like to read this letter, because it's quite enlightening of what goes on in the daily lives of our principals in the buildings. Hi, Dr. McArthur. I wanted to take the time to share with you some of my thoughts regarding the school year so far. I think I can speak so many when I say as a parent, there was a lot of question about how this year would work and how the children would adjust, respond to all the change. You and your staff are doing an incredible job serving our community. And most importantly, the children of Rain Avenue. I speak with a heart when I tell you, my children who attend Rain Avenue are happy going to school, and they leave at 3:00 are feeling good about themselves in their day. And it is not just my children. I watch everybody, children passing, skipping, and running to the gates of your building. I watch them greeted by you and your staff, warm and most crestly by name. Most of the time, I can tell you that the children are walking and feeling important, safe, secure, and careful. From the perspective of both a parent and an educator with 17 years' experience, I also want to tell you how much I appreciate your personal presence in the school. There has been, there had not been a day that I did not see you heavily engaged with our school in progress and at the same time, managed to be fully engaged with your staff, the students, and parents. You even make it point to engage my younger children, who because of the warmth and welcoming nature you have set as president at the gates, cannot wait to be students at Rain Avenue. You are present, visible, and engaged from all angles. And that speaks volumes about you as an administrator and a professional, but even more importantly, as a human being. On a personal note, I do not take lightly how you took the time to learn about my children and what their specific needs would be. Your teachers and support staff have been nothing but short of phenomenal in helping return to school and helping find success through school debt. What I always hope in high regard is how you took the time during a very busy and stressful weeks leading up to the opening to also learn and understand as much as you could about my family. I absolutely feel your leadership at Rain Avenue is making a world of difference for our children. Coming back to school in 2020, of a lot of uncertain wall. But from my perspective, Rain Avenue did not miss a beat. Our children smoothly re-entered school, are safe and secure, are happy to be there, and learning at all levels. What else could a parent ask for? We are very lucky to have you. Your competency, leadership, and your amazing staff engaging with all the kids every day. I wish you the best during the year. Good luck. And it's tremendous, you know, when we read letters like this as board members, it really makes you feel great about our administrative staff, our teachers, that you're all still doing, especially during the time of COVID. So I want to share that. We received a letter from Richard Bar. As you know, Richard has been a board president in years past and very involved in our community. And he's asking for support. It's the Edge Foundation, and they're doing now an E-R-E-F Foundation Challenge. And if anybody out there would like to donate to that, they could certainly use your donations. And all their money that they do collect when we go back to students about school. So let them bridge it out, and the board certainly will do that. We received another letter from Nassau BOCES. And invite any one of our board members or anybody in the community that would like to become part of their budget, okay? And now it's very similar to what we do in our home community. But this is now the BOCES, okay? And that's the one that's located on 71 Clinton. And if anybody would be interested in joining that and budget review for their committee, to be on that committee, please let us know. And you can do that on the Board of Ed email. And that's it for right now on the Board of Correspondence. Recommendations to the superintendent, agenda item number six.
Thank you, Mrs. Volkes. Tonight, we will be, I'm recommending that the board accept with regret the resignation of Susan Luthman for the purpose of retirement from her elementary teaching position effective January 3, 2021. And we will recognize Mrs. Luthman for all of her years of service at our December Board of Education meeting. And we show that. Also recommending that the board accept the following resignations. Melissa Watson, High-Time Mother, effective October 30, 2020. Mary Ann McDonald, Substitute Mother, effective November 17, 2020. Also recommending that the board approve the appointment of Alexandra DePresi to the position of Short-Term Substitute Science Teacher effective November 30, 2020 through February 12, 2021. And recommending that the board...
And recommending that the board approve the appointment of Russell Pager to the position of driver and traffic safety instructor effective November 18, 2020. Recommending that the board approve the request of Shawna Silver for an extension of her trial during her leave of absence effective December 5, 2020 through January 29, 2021. Recommending that the board approve the continuation of the short-term substitute teacher appointment of Christopher Rousseau effective December 7, 2020 through January 29, 2021. Recommending that the board approve the request of Anne Marie Kennedy Shukur for an extension of her leave of absence for personal medical reasons effective January 30, 2021 through June 30, 2021. Also recommending that the board approve the appointment of Danielle Lundgren, position of leave replacement school psychologist effective January 28, 2021 through June 30, 2021. And recommending the board approve the request of Francesca Legnese for an extension of her trial during her leave of absence effective January 30, 2021 through June 30, 2021. Recommending that the board approve the appointment of Stephen Smalldo to the position of leave replacement special education teacher effective January 28 through June 30, 2021. Also recommending that the board approve the revised Center Avenue and Rain Avenue Club Advisor assignments for the 2021 school year. As formally set forward in the schedule of club advisor assignments. And that is for our newscaster club at both elementary schools. Also recommending the board approve the appointment of Mary Ann McDonald to the position of school monitor part-time effective November 18, 2020. And the board approve following temporary assignments and salary approved at East Rockaway Board of Education on the non-tractical salary schedule for substitute workers. And that's Michael Zalinski, uh, substitute cleaner, Madeline Serrano, substitute cleaner, Melissa Watson, substitute monitor, Jenna Zalinski, part-time substitute teacher, and Margaret O'Leary, part-time, uh, I'm sorry, for being substitute teacher.
Are there any questions on the board? No. They have recommendation to approve for agenda item number six, A through M. So move. So moved by Mr. Gilkes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. DiMatteo. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Stay. So move. On the other items, agenda item number seven. Then look at A through E as written on the agenda. The board members can look at that right now. Are there any questions on agenda item seven, eight through E? They have a motion to approve agenda item number seven, eight through E. So move. So moved by Mr. DiMatteo, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McNally. All in favor? Aye. Against? So move. Stay number seven now, I'm sorry. Okay, seven, F. Approve the emergency contract forms. 2020 through summer food service program between Marmont and East Rockaway USFD. And authorize the Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operations to execute the contract on behalf of the East Rockaway Board of Education. G. Approve agreed upon procedures. Engage the letter between the East Rockaway USFD and Cohen Danowski for employee benefits administration and authorize the Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operations to execute the engagement letter on behalf of the East Rockaway Board of Education. H. Approve the health and welfare agreement between East Rockaway USFD and CPGUSFD for health and welfare services for the 2020-21 school year and authorize the Assistant Superintendent and the President of Board of Education to execute the agreement on behalf of the East Rockaway Board of Education. I declare our leave in preference of disposal and recycling the items listed on the technical removal form dated November 10, 2020. Then J. Accept the following donations. Javi Lores, miscellaneous thought tools for the district's grounds department. Total value of approximately $380. Peggy O'Neill, Phillips 52-inch flat screen TV. Value of approximately $800. Do we have any questions? No. We have a motion to approve agenda item seven, F, group J. So moved by Mr. O'Hagan, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gilkes. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Stay. So move. Policy item of, from Scotty. Approval of the CFC and CPSC recommendations that we received. Any questions from the board? We have a motion to approve agenda item number eight. So move. So moved by Mr. Gilkes, second.
Second.
By Mr. DiMatteo. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Stay. So move. Budget transfers. Aye. A, on the recommendation of Superintendent, the Board of Education approves upon budget transfers. We had two transfers. Transaction number 210008 with the amount of $5,553.83. And transaction number 210009, $5,786. Any questions? We have a motion to approve. So move. So moved by Mr. McNally, second. Second by Mr. O'Hagan. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Stay. So move. Policy matters. I'd like to turn this over to Mrs. O'Hagan. Mrs. McNally tonight.
I'm gonna try to do this as quickly as possible. We, um, policy subcommittee met twice on October 22nd and November 9th since our last board meeting. During those meetings, following policies where we, uh, policy 8121, R, opioid overdose prevention regulation. This policy will be adopted tonight. Policy 4531, field trips and excursions. The board reviewed the exhibits and the policy after a significant review of this policy and the provisions included with the policy. This policy will be adopted tonight. Uh, policy 0105, equity inclusivity and diversity in education. The entire board will meet in the near future to review the equity inclusivity and diversity in education policy. This policy sets out towards commitment to addressing equity in the school year. The regulation provides specific steps and actions in district intake. The exhibit provides definitions and terms used in the document. Uh, policy 4770 and 477R, graduation. This policy was reviewed to be a medium for college-level courses. This policy will be ready for adoption in December after the review. Policy 2520, board member training. This policy was reviewed and will be discussed with the whole board in the December board session. Uh, policy 2120, for free, school board elections poll watchers. This policy is up for review with one small change, to add additional poll watchers as per guidance from our school attorney. Policy 900, student attendance. This policy was reviewed and will be ready for adoption in December. Language was added to reflect attendance during the pandemic, which emphasizes the importance of student participation during remote learning and allows for various means for students to demonstrate their attendance through documented participation in online virtual classes, completion of assignments, documentation of daily school activities, MWR news, or correspondence via online platform, email and tele. Policy 9150, non-recognization. Subcommittee agreed to hold off the review of this policy until after September. Policy 5500, 5500R, student records. This policy is up for review and will be discussed with Mr. Rouse as this policy must reflect changes in education law to date student dating privacy. Policy subcommittee will be working on this policy at our next meeting along with policy 6705, federal funds purchasing. Policy 0000, mission statement efficient. Policy 4000, student learning standards and instructional guidelines. Policy 4513, library material selection. Policy 9420, recruiting and hiring. And policy 9700, professional learning and staff development.
Thank you, um, Mr. McNally. And thank you, um, Mrs. O'Hagan, for all the time that you spent. Um, we really have become policy experts and it's, uh, it's a tedious job, so I appreciate their efforts. Um, there's been, there's one policy that's been under review for a long time, so I just wanted to clarify, 6705. It's not like we're avoiding it, but it's the federal funds purchasing policy and it was recommended by, um, our auditors in, in the audit report. However, we're waiting for NISBA because we used the New York State School Board's policy service to develop a sample policy. And they have not yet devised one. And, uh, because policy is so important and it reflects laws and regulations, especially in the area of school finance, that we wanted to wait until we had a sample policy to work with that could be assured to be compliant with the regulations that, um, are, are required in order for us to have that policy. And so, um, that's why it's been sitting here for a while.
Thank you, Ms. Ruiz, for the explanation. If you have any questions on agenda item number 10, B1, 4531, field trip excursions. And B2, which is the opioid overdose prevention, 8121.1 dash R. Are there any questions? No. We have a motion to approve agenda item number 10, B1. So move. So moved by Mr. DiMatteo, second.
Second.
By Mr. Gilkes. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So move.
Actually, I do have one. It should not just be the regulation that we're approving. It's, uh, policy. The committee then, which, like, I believe, more interesting to not make a motion to amend because it is the policy as well, not just the regulation that we're approving.
Number two, policy. Policy.
Right. And the, that's a paring of the, um, agenda.
Are there any questions on the board? Now, we're talking agenda item number 10, B2. And the word policy was admitted. So we need to now amend that, okay? To make sure that we have that in there. Any questions? Okay, then. We need to make an amendment and then do a second floor.
It's going to, uh, right, we need to amend it. A motion to amend it and add anything to the policy. Just to make sure, check on our website. Um, it was the policy that we actually made the changes on, not just the regulation.
Just to be clear, is the same policy we reviewed at the last meeting?
Yes.
Same policy. We're just missing the word.
Word, all right. Interesting. That's why we're moving now to amend this now.
Yes. It is, um, in here on our website. It does say, um, opioid overdose prevention policy and regulations. So the word policy is missing.
Aye.
And the word man.
Okay, so can I have a motion to amend? Agenda item number 10, B2. Three. Opioid overdose policy prevention and regulation. So prevention. Let me do that one more time. Opioid overdose, overdose, policy, prevention, and regulation. Correct?
Prevention, opioid overdose prevention, policy and regulation.
Policy.
Sorry. We apologize for that.
All right. We have a motion to approve. So move. So moved by Mr. Gilkes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. DiMatteo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So move. Now, we have now to make now the motion to approve agenda item number 10, two, as amended. Have a motion to approve. So moved by Mr. O'Hagan, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. McNally. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? So move. Okay, agenda item number 11, reports. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Louise.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mrs. Holfes. Um, I want to provide a, uh, a COVID update. So as you're aware, we now have three positive cases of COVID-19 and we've been very fortunate to be able to reopen very quickly. Uh, the last two times, it was a turnaround in one day. Uh, we could reach remote learning. Uh, again, I'd like to thank our administrators and their teachers because this is a somewhat anxiety-provoking and labor-intensive process. But, um, our team did a great job once again. And our teachers quickly put this was, uh, new for our elementary teachers and students. And we heard that it went very smoothly. So I just want to thank, uh, our families, our teachers and of course, our students. Um, so I, I believe that we have been fortunate. You know, every day I look at the, um, we get announcements from Nassau BOCs and shoot, we'll follow the news. And there's definitely been an uptick, uh, in the number of cases and the number of school districts that are closing. We're getting now an average of about six to eight, 10 school districts a day that are closing for between one day to two weeks. So I think for us, um, our success has been due to the procedures and the guidelines. We have a place of compliance with these procedures by our students and then our staff. Um, and you know, that is one of the questions that they ask on, uh, contact tracing with the Department of Health is, are the kids and were the staff members masked compliant to return? And we're really very pleased to say that they are. Uh, and it makes a very big difference, um, in the, in determining who may have been exposed and who was not. Um, I also believe the credit goes to our, uh, school, our community at large. We're also following social distancing guidelines. Uh, we really appreciate the assistance of the National Department of Health and the skilled members of our administrative team and our nurses that have assisted with the contact tracing process. Tomorrow, um, everyone will receive a letter from me regarding, uh, the new travel guidelines and restrictions that have been issued by the New York State Department of Health. I would urge everyone to read these very carefully. With the upcoming holidays and the uptick in cases, we do hope that families who may be traveling will follow the guidelines because we know that this will help to limit the possible impact on our district. We're very proud that we've been able to stay open during this time and hope to keep our doors open as we move into the fall and winter. Um, we have engaged in extensive discussions with Board of Education, our administrative team. We reviewed the staff survey, which we issued. And we also confirmed with our school doctor regarding our instructional plan. We firmly believe that at this time, it is not the best interest of the health and safety of our seats and our staffers to return more students to our buildings. And therefore, our instructional plan will stay as is for the time being. We did discuss it, um, with the board and with our administrators and with our, our PT president, is the possibility of, uh, bringing more students back. And we have brought some students back. We brought all of our, um, co-teaching and, um, special education students in grade 79 back every day. And we've also returned some of our students from remote instruction on November 12. However, uh, at this time, given the current, uh, transmission level as well as moving into flu season and, um, moving, uh, into the winter season and we are concerned with what we're hearing on the news, we, we really believe it's best to stay put , uh, in order to keep everyone safe and healthy. Uh, we will continuously reevaluate our approach depending on the transmission level in our area. When it becomes possible, we will make adjustments in our plan. We hope that in the future, we can return all students to our schools in the line. I should say, in the near future. Uh, the Southern County, uh, my son was sharing with me this morning that a Southern County executive in a radio interview reported, he was reporting that it appears that schools are doing a really great job. Um, and again, this is anecdotal, but it does appear that the contact tracing reveals that COVID cases are not originating from inside of schools, but they are rather originating from outside of the community. And schools are managing and controlling the spread, which I think is really true. Um, so we have to keep doing the job that we're doing and, um, keeping our kids safe and keeping them in school. We know how important it is that our kids be in school and hopefully not be and hopefully not converted to remote instruction. At this time, it's just not advisable given the increase in cases that we're seeing. And I'm sure you're all safe on the news as well. So we thank everyone for their understanding during this challenging time. We do, however, wonder what parents are thinking. And so we will be holding parent forum on Monday, November twenty-third, beginning at six P M. to hear parent concerns, feedback, questions, and suggestions about how things are going with regard to our procedures, as well as our instructional planning. We asked that parents did questions in advance. On the link provided on our website, it will also be included in the letter I'm sending out tomorrow, so that we can best be prepared to respond. We'll also be sending out a brief survey tomorrow with a very quick turnaround time to gain some feedback regarding our instructional levels and what bring our discussion. Our administrators will be present, and the majority of the time will be spent in open dialogue with families. We want to hear what you think. We'll also talk a little bit about what might happen and what the policy would look like if we do, if we do have to revert to remote instruction moving forward. And again, we hope we do that. So we encourage everyone to please respond to the survey. So we can hear thoughts, questions, and suggestions. Moving on, Living with the Bay project, which you've been hearing a lot about, is specifically well-canned, is moving forward. We have been meeting with the Governor Trump's Storm Recovery meeting regularly, and we are hoping that they wouldn't have been here tonight with us to present to the board and the community about the project. However, we were not able to join us. So we are, at this moment, awaiting the final permit from the New York State Education Department. And once that is received, construction on the whole can begin. The start date of November first was established. However, since the permits have not yet been approved, that date has been slightly delayed. Like, we should shortly see trailers on our property, and we are hopeful that the warning will begin within the next week or so. And we do hope that the project will stay on schedule so that the completion can coincide with the beginning of the construction of our athletic complex, which is getting started tomorrow. So I'm really pleased to say, time goes so fast. It was a year ago on Saturday that our [inaudible 00:01:59.52] So again, I'd like to thank the community for their support of this very, very important initiative that we're moving forward. We're so excited. And Mrs. Ruiz, I'd like to play a little bit more about where we're at at this point.
Alright, so tonight, [inaudible 00:02:01.52] Tonight, we awarded contracts to the Center Avenue H T A C project, which is scheduled for the summer of twenty twenty-one. This is the second of our projects that has been approved by the New York State Education Department and the [inaudible 00:02:30.52] The Center Avenue Nation Hall was awarded at [inaudible 00:02:33.52] and that project is also scheduled to take place in the summer of twenty twenty-one. The both projects in Center are scheduled for next summer. We're ready to go. Both projects came in well below budget. The [inaudible 00:02:38.52] very exciting. Significantly below budget than now. You know, the pandemic has done a lot of things. It's negative, but in this case, we are getting a lot of proposals to work. We're anxious for jobs, and it really drives us down. One possibility that we want to. Over the past seven months, our activities were closely with our Board of Education, our teachers, administrators, coaches, and designers, the high school science labs, the locker room, family [inaudible 00:03:04.52] and the athletic complex. The plans for these projects are being finalized. They will be submitted in [inaudible 00:03:11.52] the State Education Department when they are approved. We hope to begin the athletic deals in spring of twenty twenty-one. After we will be [inaudible 00:03:18.52] We just said that it's going to begin [inaudible 00:03:22.52] It started last week. They're showing us that it will not be [inaudible 00:03:29.52] So hopefully, we'll be able to begin in spring twenty twenty-one. Hopefully, we can [inaudible 00:03:32.52] The website is merely specifically designated for that. If you look at the homepage on the left-hand side, down a little bit, go that little bit, you'll see the link for the project. On that area, we have timelines that are continuing to update. Each time we go to contract, we send [inaudible 00:03:59.52] I've put an updated timeline down there, so everybody knows where we are with the car. We are in the process of putting the plans that we just designed and then finalized. We will obviously post it up there with a summary of why I'm [inaudible 00:03:55.52] So I encourage you all, please check that on a regular basis, because on this end, you'll see that [inaudible 00:04:02.52] plenty of people out there continue to add the [inaudible 00:04:06.52] It's very exciting. Took us many years to get here, and we're really on a good slower and [inaudible 00:04:15.52]
I'd just like to add and thank Mr. Schaefer, who has worked hand-in-hand with our architect, along with our [inaudible 00:04:20.52] super science teacher, Mr. Kraus of Science Department, Mr. Bar, [inaudible 00:04:25.52] Mr. Grillo, and the coaches on the developments of the design for the athletic field. And so it's really been a complete collaborative process with input from those who want to be actually using these important new facilities that are being designed. So please, on the website, if you take a look, you'll see what classrooms will look like. Of course, we don't have all fine details up yet or renderings, but the plans are there. And one of the things that the people are all excited about is part of the athletic complex to have a brick pathway that will be quite extensive, because we know that [inaudible 00:04:58.52] have a lot of interest in using that as fundraisers, so that people can purchase a brick that will be engraved with whatever it is that they like, even to generate their child's career in school district or an alumni. And that will be a beautiful and memorable pathway to enter into the athletic complex. So we will be hearing more about that as we move forward. Time is moving fast, so we're very excited. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer, Mr. Bar, Mr. Kraus, for your reference, as well as Miss Daly and Mrs. Ruiz. It's been a great learning experience for a long time.
I want to just add one part to that, Juan, is that the board appreciates tremendously the input of everybody in Juan. One of the visions we had beginning was that everybody is part of this that needs to be part of. And it seems like what you've just reported out is we believe that that is coming to fruition. And we only know that that's the best way to go about it, because in the end, the youth is of the facilities, which are your teachers, your administrators, your students. Those are the most important people to get the most out of it. So thank you.
Thank you. In the area of achievement, center and rank teachers receive training on Superintendent's Conference Day that provide the teachers with an opportunity for a deeper understanding of our new others program with an emphasis on navigating the program's technology resources to support interns as well as hybrid learning. They also have time for learning plans, which create a space for teachers to work collaboratively across both buildings to support rebuilding construction. The guidance department is hard at work with our seniors to get college applications submitted as early as possible. Today, the class of twenty twenty-one has submitted almost two hundred and fifty applications to notable colleges that our students have applied to thus far. Include Columbia University, Farmill University, New York University, Boston University, the University of Miami, and a host of senior schools. One hundred and sixteen students are registered to test for two hundred and thirty-nine A P exams in May, upcoming May. This represents a five percent increase from last year based on the number of students that sat for an exam in May of twenty twenty. I'd like to thank our administrators and our guidance department and our teachers for providing these increased opportunities for our students. This is really quite impressive. I hope we can [inaudible 00:05:01.52] a little award from the A P of [inaudible 00:05:08.52] It will be honorable, a reward, if we received several years ago. Maybe we will receive it again. Our school counselors will collaborate with social studies teachers in grade seventy-nine to deliver great appropriate presentations on quarter fun academic and personal progress to destroy the grades specifically in classroom. They quite [inaudible 00:05:59.52] in high school activities to get to know their classmates a little better. And the role of the guidance counselor was discussed. So it's really wonderful how we're inventing opportunities through technology and, you know, keeping school meaningful for our students. In the area of opportunity, center and ranked seeds celebrate Red Rhythm Week. In this year was be happy, be brave, be drug-free. Students learn about the dangers of drug abuse and abuse and how to make good choices. And all students signed the digital pledge, be brave and drug-free. Following the success of our fall intrapaperal program, our winter intrapaperal program for all seven [inaudible 00:06:02.52] students began last week. The program will be led by our coaching staff and is scheduled to run from December seventh. We are offering volleyball, basketball at the junior high, high school levels, and high school two. So that's terrific. We're hoping that things will not change with January. East Rockaway Bell is live on the web. Thirty students read an article. Please, I hope you all take a look at it. Topics include student views on hybrid learning, the election, sports, and even a weekly recap of the vast [inaudible 00:06:25.52] I really was very impressed with the quality of the articles tonight. And this is [inaudible 00:06:30.52] This evening, I had the pleasure of talking into a few of the virtual college digital portfolio nights. Every year at this time, we go to Hampshire Museum in Huntington, and I always join the kids, because I love art. My son's an artist, and so, and I live in Huntington, and so it's just become a annual tradition. Unfortunately, we were not able to go this year. So our teachers created unbelievable opportunities for thirteen colleges to meet with our students. There were over twenty, I believe, over twenty students who participated. And I sat and felt a little uncomfortable. They said that the students and the faculty members from colleges would be expecting people to come in. And I reviewed it, didn't show my face, but it was just amazing to see our students. Even though their artwork is so beautiful and such meaning, I continue to be in awe and impressed by what our students can produce and do and by what our teachers, you know, it's only because of the art teachers who are able to provide these opportunities, as well as the skill and talent that they develop among students. So I know it was a little [inaudible 00:07:03.52] and they handled themselves beautifully. The [inaudible 00:07:09.52] of our senior band participated in a vibrato masterclass with the U S Marine Band, the president's own [inaudible 00:07:17.52] Guttery Sergeant Helen [inaudible 00:07:21.52] The U S Marine Band is widely regarded as one of the best wind ensembles in the world and is known for their educational outreach during the virtual masterclass. Guttery Sergeant duly discussed the techniques and concepts necessary to develop a proper vibrato, as well as discuss the history and duties of the U S Marine Band. So again, another great opportunity that we're able to do technology. Center and rating teachers receive technology training to support the enhancement of current technological practices. Avery teachers participated in mutual circles to support their continued growth in classroom. And our four through six teachers were able to learn more about how cani and Google forms can be used to enhance current construction. Building on our professional learning opportunities during Superintendent's Conference Day, teachers in East Rockaway, juniors in your high school are regularly successful in using various technology platforms to engage students in learning. They use breakout rooms. Use of breakout rooms does allow students both in-school and in-world to collaborate on various tasks. And that, that's really a new feature. I believe that is relatively [inaudible 00:08:03.52] And the use of cani has allowed students to advertise and write on digital documents and easily see that they were [inaudible 00:08:11.52] And the [inaudible 00:08:14.52] has enhanced, I used to put this one. I just want to give a shout out to Mrs. Eck for her work on organizing such an extensive array of workshops during Superintendent's Conference Day. That was held on Election Day. There were so much good offerings and so much work to that day. And I know the feedback from our teachers was very, very highly positive and complimentary for all of [inaudible 00:08:21.52] Center and rating newscasters are now back in production. Our daily morning news presented by sixth-rate students has helped to promote a sense of community and normalcy for our school communities. Once again, well, last year, actually, this is known with seventeen-grade advisory teams, raised twelve [inaudible 00:08:55.52] dollars for the [inaudible 00:08:58.52] sale of colorful handloom bracelets or [inaudible 00:09:01.52] in Spanish, [inaudible 00:09:04.52] high school students, staff help provide aid to create jobs and education programs in central [inaudible 00:09:11.52] So [inaudible 00:09:15.52] The Junior Senior High School has created an alumni directory that I did send it [inaudible 00:09:21.52] I know almost all of you, or many of you are alums, and I hope you will join. There's [inaudible 00:09:28.52] Mr. Schaefer isn't today?
Two sixty-five. Two hundred and sixty-five.
Two sixty-five, wow. That's amazing. Thank you so much. I know this was a passion project with Mr. Schaefer that he had done in his previous school. And when he retired, he said he was going to get it done, and he did. And so we'll be sending out news to all the alums who sign up and getting them more engagement on school community. So thank you for that. We're very, very excited. That's an amazing [inaudible 00:10:00.52] I know you engaged in the support of the Alumni Association as well. Which is great. On Friday, November sixth, students Ray [inaudible 00:10:10.52] and Emily Hernandez represented the East Rockaway School District at the Law [inaudible 00:10:14.52] Students participated in a virtual discussion about learning in school life during the pandemic. Most students have the opportunity to interact with and hear about the successes and struggles of their peers and that's on [inaudible 00:10:17.52] I'd love to see an interview with them. They will go to see what they learned and shared during that experience. And the East Rockaway High School Key Club and ninth-grade Abbott classes are open to Thanksgiving food drive to support Senator [inaudible 00:10:22.52] donations or supermarket gift cards will be taken through Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, and we drop off the entrance of the high school. Again, I'd like to thank our administrators who are here tonight, as well as those that are participating or true [inaudible 00:10:30.52] So it's great that you support our education meetings. And I'd like to wish everyone a good [inaudible 00:10:35.52] Next week, very happy and most importantly, you'll see him not be Thanksgiving holiday. Please, [inaudible 00:10:38.52]
Thank you, Ms. Ruiz, for your report. Agenda item number twelve, good welfare. Congratulations to Dr. Bradley Kraus on earning his doctorate from St. John's University. Great achievement. condolences to the Keaton family on the desk of William Keaton on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty. Father dead, professor twenty fifteen, Natalie, twenty eighteen. condolences to [inaudible 00:10:55.52] family on the passing of Father Law, William C. [inaudible 00:10:59.52] on November nineteenth, twenty twenty. condolences to Valerie [inaudible 00:11:02.52] [inaudible 00:11:05.52] family on the passing of Father Law, Ariel [inaudible 00:11:11.52] on November nineteenth, twenty twenty. And item number thirteen, public comments. Okay. And item number fourteen, one thousand and four hundred comments. This evening, I would like to go first, I don't want to go last, with something that I want to share with the community. Here East Rockaway staff, as we approach this time of the year to give thanks and celebrating Thanksgiving, we find you right at the top of our list. We are fortunate to have an outstanding team of individuals that we call staff, which includes every employee of East Rockaway School District. As we entered the twenty twenty-one school year, there was a lot of uncertainty before. When you hit the road running, have gone on to prove you are as strong as rocks. We are inspired by your hard work and commitment to our community. We cannot predict the future of education here on COVID-19, but we do know one thing, you will be able, each and every day, to the best of your abilities. The board is inspired to be by your side, providing the best resources we can afford along with creative policy to make the educational process a valid one for all. We cannot thank you enough for all you do. We cannot thank you enough for all you do for our students, East Rockaway. Your dedication, hard work, and efforts have gone beyond. Sincerely, Dom Kristin B. Joe, Department of Education.
I would like to begin by thanking Mr. Arrows for tonight's presentation. While technology was only created in the early days of our schools, now, more than ever, it is driving towards completing the 28th and it now is all of our remotely. Your continued expertise, work, and guidance for this year are all we can do. I would like to congratulate you all this for being the best guy I've ever met in life. Your continued leadership and service to the district are a testament to your love of community and student engagement. At this time of year, we are reminded of how much you have to be thankful for. I cannot express how thankful I am to the staff and the staff of your schools, but continuing to grow above beyond this policy. I echo Mr. Volker's statement, and I would like to thank all the teachers in this particularly in the rain and center, for all they are doing to ensure our young learners are using the best of your energy in this class. You are working with and helping with technology and ensuring that students are on task. Your commitment to the kids and their education will not go unnoticed, and I greatly appreciate it. Hope everyone has a nice year.
Give it real quick, maybe you took up all my time in the podcast. Anyway, Mr. Arrows, nice job. Mr. Arrows is always so enthusiastic, it's hard not to be in good mood when Mr. Arrows is talking. Mr. Wolfis, congratulations, well deserved. And I want to echo everything both of you said. You know, this year, I feel so bad for the kids, but I'm just so thankful that they have all you, and all the administrators, and all the teachers, because you guys make this place so special for them, even during the pandemic, even during this summer. Thank you very much, and have a great time. Thank you.
I would also like to congratulate you all this, congratulations. I would like to wish everyone a very happy and, most importantly, healthy Thanksgiving. It's been a tough 2020 so far, I'd say the least. Take this time off, enjoy your family, and try to be thankful for some things. I'm personally thankful for the opportunity I have now to give back to the local school district and community, it gave so much to me. So that's what I'm thankful for this year. Be smart, be safe out there, and happy Thanksgiving.
Well said. Just, you know, easy, but good advice that I learned from this conference. Do not follow, but act the way you do. Go on still, there is no bad, and do the trail. That's why I want to go on this. I'd like to leave with the word for everyone on the way. Because it means a lot to you, so I want to share it with you. Congratulations, man, outstanding. You're one of the reasons why I'm here. Being able to work with you and rest in glory is, honestly, it's hard. I feel like it's a privilege. To be able to give back like your sons to the community and to the school district has given so much to us, that's really a thank you. And just wish you all a very happy, healthy, and prosperous Thanksgiving.
Okay, can I have a motion to bring this meeting closed at 8:17? So move by Mr. McNally, second.
Second.
By Mr. Gilvis, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, say, so move. Happy Thanksgiving to all, thank you.